It's today, the 12th of May.
12th.
Word, 12th of May. We start with planning commission decisions. You guys have any, any issues with the decisions from the May 6 meeting?
Nope.
No.
Much, so.
Wasn't much there.
All right, that's, that'll be okay then. We go to legislative review. Tim, are you gonna lead us off here?
I can certainly do that. The first is Council Bill 14, which approves the sale of park interest in the town smuggler silent front iron and crown point loads to Summit County government. This is second reading. If approved, it would authorize the town to convey a 50% interest in those four claims to the county. This is part of the overall town open space program that we've been using and implementing for a number of years. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
All right. Oh, hey Dennis.
Hey, Tim, you said that's, that's number 13?
It's 14, Jeffrey.
14, okay.
Any questions? Anyone? All right, this is an easy one. Just for anybody that's watching in the audience, you can, if you're watching via Zoom, go to the Q and A button at the bottom and ask questions or go to mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. You can do that also and one of our wonderful staff members will either answer the question or I will answer it during the course of the meeting. We normally don't take questions during work session, but feel free to send some if you'd like and we can, we can probably get some answers for you either via staff or via the council. So, the next is the Breck Professional Building Lease Agreement. That is also a second reading.
Mayor and council, this is a five-year lease with Zwig Law Office that would, is currently a tenant over in Professional Building. They want to do a new lease for five years with adoption to renew for additional five years. There are no changes from first reading.
Questions? Anyone, anyone?
What number is that, Rick? 15?
All right. We have an ordinance to approve an increase in the water system maintenance fee first reading.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. The ordinance for first reading tonight will amend section 12 dash 4 dash 23 of the Breckenridge Town Code and will increase the water service maintenance fee from the 2019 fee rate of $8 to $12 a billing cycle. As Town Council may recall, Public Works presented the increase of $8 and $4 as part of the October budget retreat and Town Council at that time supported a $4 increase to the water service maintenance. It was recently discovered that the town did in fact charge the $12 for the first billing cycle of 2020. However, the current 2017 municipal water system ordinance has not been amended to reflect that new rate. So it's still, the 2017 ordinance still reflects the $8 per billing cycle rate. Therefore, tonight's first reading will amend that section of the town code and increase the fee to the $12 per billing cycle. Additionally, since the town has in fact charged our water customers $12 for the first cycle or January and February, with this ordinance, without ordinance authority, the town is looking to credit back $4 for billing cycle two. And then for billing cycle three, the rate will default back to the $8 as it's captured in the 2017 ordinance. And then going forward, beginning on July 1, for the remaining three billing cycles, three out of the six, the rate will be the $12 per billing cycle. And the new ordinance will take effect on January, or June 27. And again, it'll take effect for that third billing cycle starting on July 1, 2020. Be happy to take any questions. I know this is a little bit confusing, but the short of it was is that back in 2017, we had put in, we built in two water service maintenance fee increases as part of that 2017 town code. And we didn't make the adjustment when we adopted the, or it was approved to increase the water service maintenance fee for 2020. So this ordinance will effectively change that rate to $12 a billing cycle and so changed again by ordinance.
Thanks, James. Questions? Anyone?
Yeah, James. So the purpose of this, I mean, I motivate you to refresh my memory. It's just because of the outlay of costs for the new water plant to help to defray some of that?
Well, the water service maintenance fee was set up a number of years ago and it was really a work inverse of PIFs, the plant investment fees. And so this was, this was probably 20 years ago, we set this up because we knew that in the future, as PIFs start to decrease, we would need to capture some money.
I get you.
To use for capital improvements. And so, in essence, some of this money will be applied towards the new water plant.
Okay.
Everybody got that? We're good? All right. We move on to the first reading of the overhead walkway lighting ordinance. Julia?
Yeah, Town Council, this first reading on the overhead walkway lighting would amend chapter 12 of the town code, which is exterior lighting. We were before you at a work session in March to discuss implementing a new category of exterior lighting over walkways, which would allow for similar installations as was approved for the town project parking structure. And those were string lights that went in between the town hall and the Breck Professional Building. It was on public property as we own both of those properties. They are to be year-round downcast lighting, fully shielded, and to be strong between walkways and between buildings in the commercial lighting zones one and two. Generally, those are commercial areas of town, which are the historic downtown and areas east of Park Avenue. It does include Main Street Station. I did receive an email from Jack Wolf this morning to request that we consider allowing Main Street Station to have these types of lights as well. Currently, how we have it written is it's for publicly owned areas. And I do know that they have an access easement over some of the property, but I'm not sure the entirety. So I did have some additional questions for him, but I promised him I would bring that up with you this evening as well. I'll take any questions or clarifications if you need any on this.
Julia, how about the bulbs on these? Are these kind of low energy type lights?
Yes. So they would be, how we, how we've written it is warm or soft, white or clear lights. They'd be fully shielded, even though they're strong in between the buildings. And they would not exceed 3,000 Kelvin, which is that temperature cutoff for above 3,000 Kelvin, then you get into some, you know, human and animal negative effects on vision and health. So we stayed under that 3,000, which is recommended by the International Dark Sky Association. And then we also put in the maximum of 850 total lumen measurement across the property or the area that's being lit, which also.
Yeah. I guess my, are these the latest and greatest as far as low energy light bulbs and all that?
Yes, we could go farther and specify LEDs if you would like to. You could make that change between first and second reading. Sometimes those are a little, little, appear a little brighter.
So LEDs are gonna certainly be, LEDs will be much lower use of energy, but they tend to be pretty bright also. So.
Okay.
It kind of depends on the look that you're, that you want.
So LEDs are actually brighter and more, more efficient?
Right.
Yeah. Hey, Julia, I know Jack asked if he could do this on private property. Is I'm assuming that's not allowed by the current ordinance and it would be something we'd revisit later? Is that, is that the right assessment?
As I've written it, I don't believe that he would be able to use this overhead walkway lighting. Now, I know in Main Street Station, they use bistro lighting and then they could do some decorative lighting during the holiday timeframe, that ski area timeframe. But as this is written, it needs to be publicly owned, publicly owned access corridor.
Dick, are you interested in making this private also for?
No. You know, I'm not. I actually have concerns about that. I think that's a bigger discussion because that, that could, that could get away from us in a hurry. I prefer to keep it public, honestly, because, you know, private is allowed to use the bistro lighting during the summer as it is. And I think that's sufficient on private.
Rick?
The only, the only thing in addition I would offer is that if you wanted to consider, because I, honestly, I thought we were, I can't recall that it was just that public property distinction, because I thought the distinction was that it had to be walkways where public access, those walkways. So, you know, when you think about Main Street Station and all of those walkways across there, I thought the goal was to be able to light up walkways, whether it's public or private, but not, not private balconies or patios, but those walkways for pedestrian travel.
Yeah. I thought that too, Rick, because I was thinking about La Seema's, you know, La Seema has that walkway from public parking to Main Street. You know, that would be a place where potentially we would do that, or they might want to do it and this would not allow it. So, you know, we could talk about it and look at places that that would be effective and come back to that for second reading too and just, just change the language on second reading.
What do you guys, what do you guys think about the LED, a low wattage?
I wanted to say about that, like, I don't really understand what the issue is there, because if we have a not to exceed certain number of lumens, then how would it be brighter than non-LED? I mean, you would just, you'd have to buy a strand that had fewer bulbs or something, right? I mean, if we have a max lumens, then that's the max lumens, whether it's LED or regular.
No, that's, that is true.
So I, I mean, I would like to, I would like to see this have some sustainability. I think we should at least consider it. And if, like saying LED in here, I'm not sure if, if we have to say that it must be, but if there's a way to encourage it or.
Well, we could say must be, Kelly. There's, I mean, we can do that. This is a new deal. So how about for second reading, Julia gets information on where private, you know, it 'd have to be over private property accessing to public areas, I guess, and then, and then adding the LED language, if that's okay with everybody and we can look at it for second reading then.
Yeah, I think, Eric, or go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I was just gonna say, Julia, if there's a way to, that like we can have it as part of our overall lighting plan so that we can understand, like, I'm still concerned about just the overall amount of light that's gonna be emanating from town. I do want to make it walkable, but I also am cautious about that. So if we can add it into like our overall plan so that we don't get carried away piecemealing, oh yeah, this, it's okay here and it's okay here, but like kind of a grand plan?
Sure. I do think that that 850 total lumen measurement is gonna address that. That's, that really comes from the dark sky.
Oh, great. Okay.
Other thing we had talked about also was if this, you know, I was just remembering, we talked about if this was something we did allow on private property, somebody said, well, then they shouldn't be able to do holiday lighting then if they do this year round. So that was another consideration at some point when we were talking about this with the parking structure.
But isn't a holiday, holiday lighting is typically on buildings though, right? This would not be.
It could be on trees.
A map. I'd love to see a map of where private walk, walkways with public access, what that would, what that would look like.
There would be, yeah.
It would like to get lit up, but yeah, if it's like, if it's.
Yeah, there's a pretty big difference.
Yeah.
But.
Between 15 and 100.
I don't think there's that many, but.
Um, but right, like, am I, am I right in thinking that, like, holiday lighting would, that's typically on, I guess it's on trees too.
Yeah.
I don't know how much it would.
I think the reason was that we didn't over, overburden everything with lighting, that you have two buildings that are lit up and then you have your whole courtyard to lit up year round. So why don't we let staff take a stab at this and bring us back some more info for the next meeting?
Great.
Everybody good?
A question for Tim, I think, just the wording of the ordinance. Tim, under the purpose statement, the, the overhead walkway lighting, the definition, I guess, you know, it talks about the purpose being directing pedestrian traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Could we add in there and safety? Because I know we've talked a lot about, you know, there are some areas of the Riverwalk that are underlit and for safety purposes, we were gonna maybe look into lighting some of this as well. They might also help define some of the private areas as well around safety.
Sure. There's no problem in adding that, Dick. We'll be happy to on second reading.
All right, everybody good? Excellent. We move on to the first reading of the noise ordinance amendments. Tim or Rick?
I think this is me. I drafted the ordinance. You will remember that last time that Judge Allen was in front of you, he suggested that the town might want to amend the noise ordinance to make a violation a civil offense as opposed to a criminal offense. The most significant reason for doing that is you don't have an entitlement to a jury trial for a civil offense. You do for most criminal offenses. This ordinance, if adopted, would change the provision of the noise ordinance dealing with violations so that a violation would be a civil violation, call it an infraction, as opposed to a misdemeanor offense, which is criminal. There's a $500 cap in our ordinance already on infractions. That would be the maximum amount.
Questions? Hi, Chief.
Hello. I see no downside to this at all. I think locking somebody else for noise ordinance is over, Kelly.
Excellent. Questions? All right. And then final first hearing on, or first reading on, amend public notice requirements for town projects.
Council will recall that I was asked to draft an ordinance to amend the project ordinance process to require notice in connection with the planning commission's public before they, a recommendation on town project, as well as the town council's actual hearing to decide whether to proceed with the town project or not. That's where this ordinance started and that found in section two and three of the ordinance. Staff, we figured that as long as we were working with this ordinance, we would also like to make a couple of other, I think relatively, changes to the town projects ordinance. And those are outlined in my memo. I'd be happy to address those. But the, the real essence of this is to change the process for town projects so that adjoining property owners within 300 feet will get notice of the hearing, just like they would do if this were a Class A development process in front of the planning commission.
How's everybody feel about this? Jeffrey?
I mean, I don't think we ever lose anything by transparency. So no, I'm, I'm into this. Tim, what number is this again?
Hang on, Jeffrey. I'm not sure, but I'll find it.
I have it right here.
You have the agenda, Rick?
It doesn't have a number on it.
That's what I was getting at.
You remembered that, right, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I did.
Eric, I think this is a much better way to do business. I like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you for, for putting this together.
I will find the ordinance number. I'll look in the nighttime agenda for you.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Tim. All right. We move on to public projects update. Hello, Shannon Smith.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just had a quick update for you on the overlay schedule. Columbine should be starting overlay up on Ski Hill Road tomorrow and hopefully on Airport Road early next week.
Seems like the concrete's coming along pretty speedily. It looks good too. So did we, how much did we message this? Because I already had some people ask me why we were putting fiber back into Wellington.
I can check on that. I can assure you, as you know, there's not a lot of fiber work happening on portions of Wellington where we already worked. And the concrete will get poured back in Wellington hopefully tomorrow, as long as the weather cooperates.
They already started. They got, one of the pans is done already. It looks really.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they, they're doing nice work. But if we could have Haley just message that Wellington work is actually pan and, you know, and gutter work, whatever, gutter replacement rather than fiber, that'd be great, because the people that don't like the fact that we're doing fiber anyway, need to know that this is something else.
Sure. We'll boost the messaging on all the overlay and concrete work.
Awesome.
An Excel's gonna be back in Wellington too, right?
Correct.
Oh, that's great news.
Yeah.
That's, that's coming up. So yeah, you think it's bad now, wait till that happens.
That'll only last six or eight weeks. You'll be fine. The other thing I want to make sure council's aware of, when we, after we repave a Ski Hill Road from Lincoln up to Park, we are not putting parking back in along Ski Hill, where we had, we'll be taking those two parking kiosks out of there and we're not striping that for parking anymore. That has always been just too dangerous. There's no good line of sight that you need when exiting out of the town hall and bank parking lot and it's, it's just a dangerous, unsafe situation. So there won't be parking there in the future.
I think that makes total sense. I've had issues there. I've not seen, nothing happened. I just.
No, especially if you drive a lower car, like you do, something, you know, and trying to come out of there, it's impossible to see oncoming traffic.
Yeah, that's great.
She drives a little fast, so. She drives a little fast.
He drives at 10 miles an hour all the time.
The only thing that that parking really helped out with was that mailbox.
Yeah.
To stop that legally parked. I don't know if there is a way to solve that. I'm not saying I've ever done that.
I got a feeling it'll still happen, but.
I know, Will. Do we, do we care? I mean, it's a weird place, but if you don't care then that's fine.
Are there any other questions about any of the projects that I can answer?
Thanks, Shannon. Anything for P and T? No, we're not running any buses at the moment?
No, there's just, there's some stage report in there. Obviously, you would expect to see the decrease at the, in March compared to, that are highlighted in there. But other than that, I think, you know, we did get some numbers from the limited service that they're starting to offer. And I believe, is it this week or next week, they're gonna start up the Lake County, Park County route again, I believe?
It's interesting that they're going through another director. I feel like the last one wasn't here for that long.
Yeah, opportunities. Yeah, he got a good job with CDOT, so. That's a difficult position, as you know. We tried to hire that.
Hey, Rick, on the, if we're talking summit stage, any idea why their maintenance and operating expense was so much more in March of 2020 as opposed to 19?
Well, operating, operating is gonna be personnel cost and they continue to pay their drivers like we did. So that would be, remain the same. Their fuel usage obviously was cut in half is what you would expect to see.
Yeah. And actually, after looking at it, again, maintenance is lower. It's just operating that's higher.
But maintenance was still, no, maintenance was very high, Dick. I noticed that too. March 20.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. 102,000 for maintenance.
Right, over 67,000.
I, I'm all, I don't know the answer. I would just assume that they, because they pulled their buses off, off route, they probably maybe did some work on them that needed to get done.
Yeah, that may make sense. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Are we, well, this has to do with, so with Breck Park, what is our arrangement with them now? We're still, are we still employing them? Are they ticketing for, who are parking handicap spots? What are they doing?
Shannon?
Yep. So we are still paying them. We're working out some details on kind of what's fair to be paying them right now. They do have about five folks that are still on staff and some of them are working on system things. Some are working with our CSOs and they've been working really hard on the vehicles we've had left in the satellite lot for a long time. So they're kind of working on some project things that people hadn't had time to get to. We do need to have a conversation and Rick and I are gonna talk about this this week and bring it back to you about what parking looks like going forward. But right now, we're not, we're only ticketing for, you know, blocking driveways and fire hydrants and, you know, those kinds of violations.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on P and T or committee reports?
I saw a question on, on question and answer about fiber in Vista Point and then it was, then it went away. Did someone answer that for that guy?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool.
Breck Events Committee, Shannon? Is this you?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So the memo is in the packet. There wasn't a whole lot to point out from that meeting, but Dick and I and Lucy and Todd Rankin had a separate meeting last Friday because things about, kind of around the 4th of July are progressing in different ways. And I think the group had a fairly lengthy conversation about what 4th of July should or shouldn't look like in Breckenridge and, you know, what we might try to do to help engage the community while not really encouraging visitors. It came to Casey, Casey Willis from the BTO came to her attention after she did a little bit of research that a lot of the folks in the metro area are actually canceling their 4th of July activities. And so it became pretty worrisome for us that if we were to have any real kind of community event, even if it was only intended for our own folks, that we could end up driving traffic up here from the metro. Dick, I had to hop off the call on Friday. Dick stayed on with them. I think the general consensus was that we should probably not do anything for the 4th of July. There's been a little bit more conversation this week. Some of the other areas in Summit County aren't necessarily willing to commit to not doing anything. So there's a little bit of still conversation within the BTO. Maybe there is something truly, truly community based that, that we might still be able to do or some kind of real local animation that would not drive anyone to come up here for it, that we might continue to do. But kind of the general idea and what we want to get feedback from council on tonight is if you are all in agreement that we should do nothing or very little on the 4th of July. Dick?
Yeah, just to add to Shannon's comments that, you know, Lucy pointed out, I think appropriately, that we're, we're trying to work with the rest of the county so that we're all consistent in our thinking. And Casey, she now has Casey, the BTO's events person participating. in a countywide events group, which we did not have representation in in the past. So so I know Casey's working hard on that. I thought, you know, the events are canceling left and right for the summer, and you know, trying to postpone some into the fall is becoming a little more problematic as, you know, the more we postpone till fall, the more compressed that schedule becomes in the fall, if, if we even have one. So yeah, so that would be the only thing I'd add.
How's everybody else feel about this? Gary?
I'm fine with a very low profile for Fourth of July.
Jeffrey? You're muted.
Jeffrey, you're muted.
Did Erin mute me?
She did.
I wish I could.
I would, you know, I would, yeah, I'm, I'm fine keeping a low profile. I would like to leave the door open for some out of this, out of the box thinking about, I don't know, some maybe cool event generated just to the locals and the family. I don't, even, I'm spitballing, a town cleanup day, a group hike, a mountain bike with the mayor, or just some, whatever, some chalk art thing for, for the local kid. But yeah, I, I am okay kind of trimming it way back, but I would like to just be thinking about something that if we can do some sort of cool event for, for the folks that live here. But I don't know what that is yet, especially if I'm muted.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it just goes back to all these conversations we've been having recently of trying to keep groups to 10 or less. I just don't see how events really can work with that. So I understand.
Dennis? Dennis, you're muted.
Dick, did you have time or did the committee talk about a drop dead date?
Or Fourth of July?
Yeah, I mean, is it?
We were talking June 1st, but, you know, it could happen sooner than that.
That makes sense. Yeah, I'm good with a really small version or nothing at all.
All right, and Erin?
I, first of all, I know, I know that this is really hard for a community. I mean, it just stinks. I think that people will be up here regardless. I think if we do nothing, people are still going to come. I think we really have to be careful, even if we do small events, because that will attract that more than 10 people in the same area. So even if we do something just for locals chalk art or whatever, we just have to be careful because they're gonna be here. It's just whether we create something that attracts them all, all together. So as long as short-term rentals are open, which I assume that they will after June 1st. So, because that's the information that we have. So that's, I would just be very careful with whatever local option there is, that it doesn't bring people together like that.
Yeah, I totally agree. I, it is difficult to see what's, even imagine what's gonna happen at the start of July at this point, given the fact that, you know, the, the governor has now moved back the discussion on restaurants, even from the 21st to the 25th. That's his latest thing, and that's just a discussion about when restaurants are gonna open. So, you know, that, this stuff keeps put, getting pushed down the road a little bit. I am really concerned that something will happen in one of the other states, and we will, you know, we, we will end up putting the brakes on either at the state level or at the county level. So I think this is the right move right now. So, there you go. Anything else for the events report? You wanted to key on, Dick or?
Eric, one more item from, one more item from the events committee. They say working group was formed with Casey driving it to look at the closing of Main Street, to establish budgets, to look at logistics, to coordinate with all the players we need to coordinate with. It's, I just, I want to recognize Lucy and the BTO. They, they are really stepping up, and you know, they're concerned about budgets, and, and they're just still not hesitating to jump in and roll up their sleeves and doing a tremendous amount of work and compress schedules. And we're working really hard to get this stuff done. So.
Very good. Thank you for that, Dick. I actually met with Chris Kulik and Sarah Wedmore and Casey Willis today to sort of look at what it would take to get three tables into a zone outside with proper distance, or six, four tables, four, four tops. And it's a 10 by 34 area. So the next step, Sarah and Casey will talk to tents and events. There's some discussion about whether these needed to be tenet or just umbrella. That, you know, there's a whole other layer of stuff if you, if we need to have tents. And then Chris Kulik was gonna look down the street and see how a 10 by 34 footprint sort of fits, leaves plenty of room in the middle of the street. So they're, they're working on it, and I, they were way up to speed when we chatted. So I was, I was really impressed with Casey and Sarah and Kulik, so.
Hey, one thing, Dick, what's going, what's going on with the Epic?
He is postponed till 2021. He just announced it. I think yesterday went out to the, to the participants, and today he sent it to some of the sponsors and such.
You know, one thing that I'm, I'm a little concerned about, and I haven't, haven't heard this from the promoters of, of any of these events, like the Firecracker or the Epic, but I've kind of seen it online a little bit. I, I do not want to create kind of a world where people would, would come up and try to do each individual leg of, of whatever race we're talking about on Strava and then compare that time. You know, that, that was one of the thoughts. Well, we can, we can do a virtual Epic or a virtual Breck 100 or a virtual Firecracker. I see that as just a lot of people coming up here, going, going hell bent for election on our trails, and, and I worry, I worry about conflict. So if that's brought up, I, I hope you can say at least my thought on that.
That's a, that's a great point, Jeffrey. He is working on a virtual event, but I don't think it's, it's competitive based on the old race course. It's more just competitive on get out and do smiles, kind of, wherever you are, not coming here and doing them, just wherever you are.
Okay, good, good.
I have a, one addition with that in mind. I hate that we even have to think about this, but you know how when Breckenridge put together lists of, of restaurants that are open for takeout? If we could have included with our, with our event minutes, the status of different events so that we can keep it straight of what's been canceled, what's been postponed, that, that sort of thing, because it, it ends up being a lot of new information.
Yeah, that's great. That's a great question.
All the, all of it. But that would be great. Thank you.
Alrighty, that's it for events. Let's go to the re, this, this goes right into the reopening committee update. Shannon or Rick?
Yeah, we started a little segue there already, and you know, as we, as we're, we're feverishly planning for you know, the reopening and the closure of Main Street. The good news is there's a lot of people doing a lot of work. The bad news is there's a lot of people doing a lot of work. And in some cases, that means we have people kind of crossing over, or, you know, we're not maybe aligned as well as we need to be aligned. And so we're pulling together a smaller kind of core group of some decision makers on Thursday to really provide some direction to, to the people that are doing a lot of the work out there with the, you know, on the closure committee on Main Street. So you know, I think we're on track, but there are decisions that need to be made. Everything from are we gonna allow tents? Because some people think we need tents over the eating areas because of inclement weather that may occur. You know, and then if there, maybe tents are optional, but who's paying for those tents and what, you know, potential cost of that kind of stuff. So there's, there's, we're at a point where we have a lot of those decisions to make. Where I could use some additional input from the Council, as we're working through this, we're obviously getting inquiries from businesses, some of which are, you know, in the core. But they may be out, just outside the boundaries of where we're doing our closures. And those businesses would also like to consider some expansion because they, they, you know, they're gonna suffer some of the same challenges. In many cases, they might be expanding out into a private parking area, so they would need permission from that, that parking owner. If you take like Breck Brewery as an example, you know, they may go out into some of that. They'd lose some parking. But I need to know if you're open to that, because we're gonna have, we need to have an internal review for a very quick type of, some sort of permitting that we would do whenever that occurs, because we are waiving, temporarily waiving some parking requirements. And there are a number of cities that are doing this across the country in realization that they need to expand the footprint of the business and allow some additional seating. The one thing we don't want to do is we do not want to spill out into more public parking areas. I do not, I know at one point we were talking about maybe doing something for Ridge Street on Upper Exchange. But I don't think we should do that. I don't think we should allow La Sima to spill into Tonapah. I think, you know, Tonapah, Upper Exchange, Ice House Lot, Tiger Dredge. I think those are critical parking reservoirs that we need to maintain over the summer. We're piecemealing and losing a lot of parking as we go through this. If we allow, you know, this business to go out and you know, whether it's Breck Ridge Brewery on the south end, or Blue River Bistro on the north end, that's just outside the closure area, and they want to expand out the rear a little bit. And take, you know, there's a loss of three or four spaces here, a loss of three or four spaces here. That can add up over time. So I think we should be open to letting those businesses, if they can work it out with the property owner, expand through a simple permit process, if you're okay with it. But I don't want to see us, you know, starting to expand out into some of our public parking reservoirs.
What about the Arts District? The Arts, that Arts District little parking area?
Barney Ford?
One-way, would we make that?
But who's gonna use it? I mean, you can't have alcohol on it because it's not contiguous to any business, so you can't do alcohol. All you could do is set up, you know, some, some tables so people could go set with their takeout. But we have to be careful on how we, how we deal with takeout also, because you know, somebody can go to any one of your restaurants, right, and they can order a meal to go, and they can order an alcoholic beverage to go. The thought is that you're taking that home to consume it, or you're taking it into a private area. You can't go set in a public area and open that alcoholic beverage and drink it. That's an open container violation.
Right.
And so unless.
Probably make it the other way, right?
Well, you.
So that you can act, so if we close off Main Street, a parking area that's only accessed by the one-way street across from Twist?
Yeah. We're talking about the Barney Ford lot.
Yeah, we'll still park in there, right? You're just saying that it won't be one way, it'll be the other way. I'm just saying, is it for parking, then we should use it for tables?
So what we've done in the past when we shut Main Street down is we, we allow, we put a barricade up by the alley so cars can't continue, but we allow westbound to go ahead and access into that parking area where in the past they couldn't. So.
Rick, I agree with you. I, I think we, I think we do the Main Street experiment. And, and we really, you know, maybe we buy some extra chairs or benches and, and try, you know, because people are gonna be looking for more outdoor areas to, you know, to sit and, 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 you know, maybe if they are gonna have takeout food or whatever. But I, I would agree. We don't, we don't, you know, on private, private parking, you know, condo association parking or whatever, that kind of stuff is, is one thing. But we start spilling out into all the public areas. And it's gonna become problematic. So I would agree with you.
Are you open to allowing businesses?
I mean.
Are you open, are you open to allowing us to work with some businesses outside that area that may spill out into a private area?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, full disclosure, I'm talking to Mountain Wave and Blue River Sports about serving lunch for Mikasa on that parking lot right up front there. It's owned by the condo association, so.
That's, that's the exact example of what we would be talking about, that we would work with. And I think we need, you know, we can do a free permit, but we want something to at least know what's happening.
Yeah.
And you would still, I think you would still be eligible if you wanted to do that for what's called a side, that sidewalk service permit through the state. If you wanted to put alcohol out there. Because you have a direct access from the interway to that lot.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we'll see how it evolves. But yeah, I know George at the Canteens talking about that, his lot and, you know, the brewery, some other examples. I, you know, I, I think it allows us to have more space for the restaurants, and but we don't need to be taking over public areas.
I, you know, in talking with Kulik today about this, there's a, you know, like a lot of things we do, every single business has a different and problem. And, you know, we're just gonna have to try to work through some of them, and, you know, hopefully everybody will understand we're trying to be fair to everybody. And, you know, if the, if businesses on Ridge Street come up with a plan, I, I think we should allow the staff to examine everything, you know, with some parameters. So if everybody's okay with, with that, letting Rick and, and his team say, yeah, that works there, we can, you know, if, for instance, Fatty's one needs two parking spaces in front or something, maybe that's a way to solve that. But maybe they don't want anything, too. You know, we still need to find out who's interested and who's not also.
When we have to, yeah, we also have to, if we, if we do take up too much parking, and I, I agree with, I agree with all the steps that have been mentioned, I am, we're gonna be pushing people out to satellite lots, and then they'll need public transportation, and then we'll be putting them together, and then they might not feel safe, where we're trying to do all this to make people feel safe. So I, I think that this is a good middle ground.
Rick, I'm good with private. Note of, note of public, and let our committee take it on, on a case-by-case basis like Eric just suggested.
Me, too. You know, I think, I think I'm, I'm in agreement with all you guys, but I, I think we're all, I think we all kind of leaning towards a less a fair, pro-business, flexible summer. And, and I agree with what, as far as on, on private, be flexible on public, no. But, yeah, I, I think, I hope, I hope we drive people out to the satellite lot. That means that we have a lot of people. But I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that it's, it's, we might not. So I, I just want these businesses to be able to squeak by, so, yeah.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, keep with businesses. One other thing is typically our first, so we had originally with the Retail Association, working with retail, proposed three sidewalk sales, which normally happens. I know that you've all considered allowing us to relax the outdoor display of merchandise, probably especially in the, it, it only occurs in the, in the historic district anyways. But we're coming up on that. We would have had one typically in April. They always want an early sidewalk sales. And then Memorial Day is always typically set in stone for the first sidewalk sale, Memorial Weekend, which is coming up. And we have some businesses that are still, would still like to do that. And we had told them originally that Memorial Weekend was gonna be allowed. So while I don't, I suggested that they might want to wait because we were, we would allow them to do it more in the summer this year. And it might be worth their while, but they said they still like to try to do something on Memorial Weekend, so.
Yeah, Dick?
Yeah, hey, Rick, I mean, this may be a good segue to talk about this. There's, you know, Lucy and the BTO are working on a bi-local campaign, which has started to get some legs and grow into a, it, it started as a, they, they call it Takeout Tuesday. So it started kind of with the restaurant community pushing takeout, but there's a real effort to expand it into retail and really focus on one night a week. And, and I think they're looking at Tuesday because it's a quieter night, and, and really push bi-local. You know, the restaurants take out Tuesdays easy. Bringing in the, the retail community and, and maybe we allow sidewalk sales every Tuesday. I don't know, this thing's evolving. But bring in the arts community, you know, there's a real recognition that we, we have some incredibly talented musicians that are out there starving. And, you know, because they, they rely on, on gig work and, um, you know, so try to involve. And then it grew into, do we try to do some kind of virtual, you know, art, bring in, bring in all of the arts? And, and, you know, the galleries and, and really blow this thing up once a week around a bi-local, um, campaign. And, you know, I talked to Gary a little about, um, try maybe engaging the BCA to help produce this thing and engaging the arts community. You know, I think Lucy and the BTO could engage the restaurant community and the, and the retail community, uh, rely on the BCA to partner with the BTO. And, and maybe take on the production side of bringing in the arts and just really trying to have a big bi-local, once-a-week kind of event. So I, I told Lucy I would present this to you guys, this may be the best time to do it and, and kinda see what people's thoughts are.
Anyone?
I think this is exactly what we need. And there, there again, that's, this is, this is another example of why I think we'll fare better than a lot of communities. Because of Lucy Kay and people in the BCA that, that think out of the box. Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I won't, I wouldn't begin to give your advice about what to do. But I think by doing something like this and kinda keeping it, keeping it flexible, keeping it creative, I think, uh, it, it will bear, it would bode well for the town.
I agree.
Aaron agreed. Kelly?
But are we still okay with letting the sidewalk sale Memorial Weekend?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Rick, I, I, I would hold back my, but let's see what the governor says on the 25th, eh?
Retail's already open, though.
I get him on the phone.
I don't know if we need to figure out, you know, they're gonna need to have a plan for how they arrange their sidewalk sale. And I don't know if that means that you can have one rack or you can have two racks as long as they have plenty of distance. There's gotta be some regulation. It can't be done like it's been done in the past, though. There, there's no way that they can just have five racks in front of their store and have a bunch of people congregating. They can only have 50% of their occupancy inside the store right now. So, you know, if it's one person per hundred feet inside, is it the same outside? We're gonna have to get some clarification, I think, from, from public health on that.
All right. The last thing I'll mention on this real quick is you, you brought up sanitizer and masks. We got about 5,000 masks on order right now. Masks are really hard to get ahold of. The hand sanitizer, we got 60 one-gallon jugs. And we, we put them out, so we're selling them in one-gallon increments. We paid $40, we're selling them for $42 to cover the, the administrative fee on the online purchase of those that are made, oh, they're only getting sold to Bolt license holders. They, the rec center put them out for sale yesterday and they were sold out the first night. So we're ordering more of those. We're ordering more, we can get them, I think, at a better price and get a large quantity and it helps the business community. And we'll, they, they pick them up two days a week. We'll have, I think it's Tuesday and Thursday from like 11 to 1:00 or something like that. They'll come out to public work. We'll have, they will have already made their electronic payment, so there's no exchange of cash. And then we just, you know, it's like curbside pickup, right? Of their, uh, one gallon of sanitizer. So it's proving to be successful and we'll give an update during our recovery meeting with our task force tomorrow and how that's working. But we've already ordered another, I think, 61 gallon. We get them out a long month, so.
Rick, I, I think we're gonna have to order a lot more than that. We're gonna have to allow businesses to buy more than one gallon at a time. You know, I, I real, I think we should just go in on this right now because people want, they want this stuff in-house now so they can prepare. You know, I, I don't, I think-
What do you want, 200?
Uh, 1,000? I mean, come on, man. I mean, what, what kind of deal do you get at 1,000? You know, do you get it significantly?
Scott Reed's probably listening in right now.
Okay, it's not-
Over and is, fair, right?
If it's available and we have storage, I think I would agree with Eric. I-
Let me see how much we can get. Let me see how much, what we don't wanna do is get caught, right? Was the demand, if you get it early, maybe we can rush a little bit. And Scott, we talked about that.
You're gonna, you're gonna not only need this for today, we're gonna need this in December, we're gonna need this in February. We will not get stuck holding the bag on a lot of 1,000. You'll, you'll, you will be stunned how quickly this goes out the door. Especially if we can allow, um, sit, allow businesses to buy this five gallons at a shot.
All right. Well, I guess we can always drink it, cause it's 80%.
It won't be like my garage, it's full of toilet paper. Hey, um, Rick, uh, are we, I had a quick text from somebody just recently about the ice rink. What's, what's our plan on that? When's that gonna open again?
Uh, it'll probably be one of the last facilities that we open for a couple of reasons. Number one, recreation isn't even on the radar screen right now.
Okay.
And we're actually experiencing some significant cost savings as part of our budget savings by not having that up and not keeping that ice, uh,
Okay.
Whatever they have to do to keep that ice up there, so.
Ballpark, what, what, I mean, what are, what are we talking, like?
July, August, maybe July, I think, you know, probably.
Okay.
If we, I mean, if, if it's a big demand and we see a need and things are changing, that, uh, I'd have to check with Scott to see how much time we would need. But, um, you know,
Okay.
Like I said, it's, oh, it's lower on our list right now.
All right.
I have a mass comment. I know, I know that, um, that Haley's been putting a lot of great information on, on social media and it's fantastic. And there's, you know, the messaging comes in and out of town, it's great. I know that some people are still confused. And I know that, um, like Emily just posted a comment about 90% of people not wearing masks. I, I wonder if just good old fashioned signage up and down Main Street about when to wear a mask and, you know, the, the six-foot rule and all that, if I could just clarify some things. I know that it's really hard to get messaging out, but perhaps just on Main Street, maybe in the welcome center windows explaining, you know, if you're, it's, you know, if you're within six feet, wear a mask. That sort of thing, um, just so that everybody is aware.
You're assuming that people that aren't wearing it don't know?
Uh, well, no, I think there's some confusion, cause I, I see people, A, wearing it when there's nobody around, when they probably don't need to be, which is fine. That's not what we're worried about. But I do wonder if they think that everybody else is breaking the rules because they're not wearing it when they're not around people. And then you have, I, it just might be good clarification, good education opportunity to just have a sign on Main Street or two.
Gary?
Now, let me, let me just follow up on Aaron's comment on masks. I was in Subway yesterday to pick, you know, get a sandwich. And there were a couple guys in there, quite frankly, didn't have any masks on. And there was probably eight of us in there, we're all, you know, six feet apart, making a long line. And, um, you know, I pointed to my mask and I pointed to them, you know, obviously to no avail. I also think the messaging has to get to the, to the stores themselves to not serve somebody that comes in without a mask, saying, look, we're just not gonna, we can't serve you. You're gonna have to leave or you're gonna have to put a mask on. So, and, and in Subway, you know, you had some employees, so they're not gonna basically take that position. So I think somehow we gotta get to the owners of all the businesses, as well as the employees within the business, to let them know that in fact, we have passed an ordinance and we are looking to the, the businesses to turn down business if there are people in there without a mask on. To me, it just came home yesterday by, uh, walking into, uh, walking into Subway. And I know right now we could, we, our ordinance only has us, not that we necessarily would, but we have the power to find individuals who aren't wearing a mask. If we find that the businesses aren't really stepping up and playing ball, we may need to amend our ordinance. That brings the businesses into a fining situation if they are basically serving people without masks on.
Well, and per, per the county, do, do the businesses still have to post what they're doing? Like, don't they have to post the, the things they're enforcing? So as you walk into a business right now, does it say, we, you, you need to wear a mask to walk into this business? So to Gary's point, is it just not enforcing what the, the notice?
Here's the deal, they probably have to have, uh, so there's, there's a compliance checklist that the county has created, all right? The county, and as part of that, it's for doing, um, compliance monitoring. And the county is gonna start doing random checks of open businesses to make sure that they have the proper signage posted and that they're following, uh, our, one of the checkmarks, our face coverings being worn by employees and customers. So we're, I just today communicated and shared this checklist with the police department. And so as time allows, our police officers and CSOs, when they're walking around, will be doing, uh, random compliance checks in open businesses to make sure that they're following the rules. So, um, a business could be shut down by a, obviously in the county's approach too, is that they will, uh, you know, they're gonna try to work with a business if they don't see compliance. But if, if a business refuses to follow the public health orders, they could be shut down by the public health, which is what is way harsher than a $50 fine.
Absolutely.
So.
Good.
But it's a very, nobody wants to challenge people. Their masks are gonna be our worst thing that we are gonna deal with.
Yep.
Going forward.
I, I think people find that the majority of the restaurant community will, will be on this, Gary. I mean, the, the independents in this town, um, the ones that, you know, are, are constantly involved, they will make sure that, that nobody gets served without a mask. I mean, from Dick to TJ to, uh, you know, Fackler and the, the Nelson brothers, they're not gonna allow this to go on. And I think that once restaurants get open, I think that changes a bit of the dynamic and people will understand. You're not gonna be able to eat and break if you're not wearing a mask.
How many years have we all been used to those signs that said, no shirt, no shoes, no service? Right? Now you're just adding masks to the list. I mean, nobody, everybody assume you go in, if you don't have a shirt on, you're probably not gonna sit in somebody's restaurant and eat.
You have to wear pants, now you have to wear a mask and pants.
No, Rick, you're, Rick, you're exactly right. And Haley's sign, Haley took a restaurant, so Colorado Restaurant Association sign and put a Breck Ridge spin on it. And I think the whole restaurant community is gonna try to utilize that, that consistent message. And it's exactly that, Rick, it's no mask, no service, so.
But just so you all know, we have been getting emails from people that have criticized us because of we're anti-constitution, we're communist, we're whatever. So there, there will be people that will push this thing because they don't believe it's true. They, you know, have all kinds of different beliefs. But, you know, we're going with what the law is and that's the way I think we need to operate.
Well, I think if we can do the random testing and, uh, you know, quite frankly, there will be some people who aren't following the rules and just, you know, remind them that they need to with, with a threat of being shut down. That word gets around, that should go a long way.
Agreed.
All right.
All right, anything else on the recovery team? All right, we go to a sustainable Breck annual report.
Uh, Mark's gonna come on for this, but mainly to see if you guys have any questions.
How you doing, Mark?
I'm doing great, thanks, Eric. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
So I, I don't have any presentation on this. Jesse and the staff did a bunch of great work on it, but be glad to answer any questions you have or try to, anyway.
I have a question about, um, construction recycling. Is there a way to either incentivize recycling at construction sites or require a percentage of recycling? I mean, I saw that that was one of our red dots that I don't feel like we've, um, spent much time talking about. And then also just that we've just done all this sustainable building code. It seems like maybe we're not far off from knowing a better way to handle construction waste.
Yeah, that's a good question, Kelly. Right now, unfortunately, most of that waste is not recyclable. Um, and so it's, it's basically going in the landfill. And that's one of the reasons we saw our diversion rates go down last year. I know HC3 has worked on some, some things to try to address that, but nothing has really materialized yet to make that an improvement. So it's certainly something I can share with Jesse in terms of, if there's some strategies we can come up with, even on a local level. But right now, it's, it's, it's not really promising in terms of where that stuff goes. It ends up in the landfill.
Yeah, it's just so frustrating that we're doing all these like, you know, improvements that cost things, or I guess not improvements, but changes to the code that have cost and are diff, are more tough pill to swallow. And then this seems like such an attainable thing to figure out, but maybe it's just not that simple. If HC3 hasn't figured it out, then it must not be simple.
Kelly, I think we'll, we'll move the needle more on that solid, I'm assuming you're looking at the solid waste generation red, red circle. And, uh, you know, it's amazing, and I forget the numbers, but how much of our solid waste is food scrap?
Oh, yeah.
As we get better and better at, um, composting, I know Eric's been a real leader on this and pushing it. And, you know, if we find, can, can, can work with haulers and do a better job on the commercial side and continuing, uh, everyone that's out there listening, I strongly encourage you to, to, uh, jump on board with HC3's composting for, for individual households, super easy. That, that can really move the needle. So I, I just have to plug that one, cause I agree with you, as our, our solid waste numbers are embarrassing.
Yeah, but that's a great point, Dick, for sure. And, you know, at my house, we get, um, trash every two weeks. And the compost program has been the best because we never have smelly trash anymore. We, we compost, I take the compost, you know, a few times over those two weeks and there's just nothing in there that's gross. It's awesome.
You know, maybe, Kelly, with the, uh, with, with the construction trash, maybe we should just get a couple of the, of the bigger companies that, you know, sort of have this in their DNA, like Pinnacle, and talk with them about it. You know, sit down with those guys and say, what, what would you do differently if you could? How could we reuse some of this construction material? Is there any way that, you know, some of this stuff that's big enough to almost recycle, we could have a place where they could put it and other people could then go and get it? I don't know, you know, but that, that might be, we can, you know, talk with, with some of these bigger companies about, and smaller companies, honestly.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And, you know, some of these, some of these guys that are sort of friends of ours that we know.
Yeah, I, the one thing Jesse's listening in and she just, uh, sent over a text. Actually, the construction, um, waste was considered in part of the building code amendments. But it, they dropped it out because there's just no local markets right now to address that. And, you know, like a lot of recycling products, like the higher numbered plastics, there's just not viable, um, market right now for those.
Yeah.
Sure.
Hey, but I, I would like to kinda reiterate or, or repeat what Kelly said. If anyone listening out there, uh, individual is not on this HC3 compost plan, it's just a great deal. They give you a bucket, it's airtight. And, uh, yeah, I, I drop it off, like I said, maybe every couple of weeks. And it really, it is a limited, it's lessened a lot of our trash. So just call HC3 and, and get on that program.
Excellent. Any other questions on the Sustainable Breck annual report? Hey, Mark, when this whole COVID thing gets to the end, I would love- COVID thing gets to the end, I would love to see a report on, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some worldwide report on what lessened plane traffic, what, you know, the, the decrease in car traffic has done, moved the needle on that, you know, that 2030 goal. I mean, is this, you know, we've always been told that transportation's the big mover of the needle for our 2020 carbon reduction worldwide. What, what has happened? I would love to know, did, did we set the needle back a couple of years? Did, was this, do we just need to shut down for three months every couple of years to keep the planet where it should be?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great comment, Eric. Obviously, the earth is getting a nice um, little vacation right now from our daily impacts. And uh, so that's something uh, we could talk about looking at. I mean, we've talked about it internally as staff has, and I've had those discussions with Rick is just everyone's getting used to this video conference world. And how many meetings could we avoid driving to down in Frisco, the other side of the county, even here? Just handling business this way. I mean, we've got our uh, financial consultants that come up here four times a year from Denver to have a meeting with us. They could probably do most of those remotely. Maybe we have one in person a year. So I think there's a lot of opportunities, learned experiences from this whole ordeal.
Absolutely.
What's amazing is how quickly the earth is responding.
Pretty cool.
Doesn't need us.
No, at all. All right, let's uh, let's move on to the uh, policy 33R energy conservation.
Okay, thank you. Um, on this, really the impetus, impetus for this was because we just made those code changes. And essentially with the 2018 code, which we were going to adopt, um, which we did adopt, it, it's in a realm now where everyone's needing to get a hers rating as part of going through the construction process, you know, the home energy rating. So um, we had for a number of years incentivize that by giving positive points. And so we needed to go in and remove that now because essentially it's double dipping in our point system for some, it's already required. As the building code and some of the sustainable build provisions that were put in place recently by us and the county in Frisco have mandated that e spaces be provided, electric vehicle spaces be provided to a certain extent, and also that um, homes and buildings are built with EV, uh, roller ready. So basically the conduit and wiring is basically um, up to the rooftop to allow for that to be installed at some point in the future. So um, we had positive points for that as well in the code. So that was kind of the initial impetus for this. And so we've addressed both of those issues by taking the positive points out for that. However, I, I would say, I, I got a couple of things on this, but um, the planning commission weighed in on this and they recognized and agreed with all the proposals. But they also felt that um, one thing, there's a, there's a little bit of a yin and yang, a cosmic balance, if you will, in our development code system in terms of having positive points available to offset negative points and vice versa. And if you take away too many positive points, are you kind of playing with that cosmic balance, so to speak? And so there was a little concern with the commission is like, it seems like is all we're doing is coming up with more negative points, not identifying enough positive points. Well, that's not so easy to do, but um, partly as a result of that, we did decide um, to allow a positive point for a 10 to 19% energy efficiency increase over what the code already requires. So we put that in uh, partly in response to what the planning commission suggested. Obviously, we look for your input on that as well. One of the other things that we did was um, we did increase negative points for outdoor heated spaces. I want to give you just a little background in this, talking with one of our local architects who's designed a lot of the big lodges at Peak Eight. He indicated on one of the last projects he worked on that uh, the, the amount of outdoor heated space, hot tubs, pools and everything, the energy by that exceeded the indoor energy use higher building.
Wow.
Which is pretty, yeah, pretty appalling. And so um, and we identified the problem that right now our negative points end at 1,000 square feet. So essentially we've been digging, dinging the little single family residents that's come in. But once you get to 1,000 uh, square feet or more, it was just a negative three points. And there was no additional penalties for going beyond that. So what we've suggested now is that we incrementally increase the negative points as the square footage gets more that you're heating of outdoor space. We've also done the same thing um, on hot tubs and pools, looking at those as well. We still need to develop a kind of graduated point schedule for that. But that was a recommendation that came from the planning commission. So um, we're definitely doing that as well to address that issue. And finally, we've added positive points for um, if you're going beyond the building code, the new building code. So if you're, if you're willing to provide more EV capable spaces or more EV installed spaces, you can still get positive points for doing that, just going beyond what the baseline requirement is already. So that's an overview of the uh, work session um, here on the changes to policy 33R. We look for your input, we'll probably then bring it back to the planning commission. And if council is comfortable, then we move forward with uh, bringing a first reading to you down the road here.
All right, questions?
I thought this looked really, really good. Um, and the only thing that I would say in addition is if we need to find some more positive points, let's definitely do it with sustainability. I'm all for that.
Absolutely. I see a lot of head, head nods.
Good.
Yeah, I like it. I think it's a great approach.
Excellent. All right, uh, let's move on then. Thanks, uh, trucks, appreciate it, uh, club memberships.
Okay, um, so on this one, I could probably start out with a simple yes or no question. As you're all very aware, we just had this discussion a couple of months ago regarding the East Peak Eight Hotel. And the club membership was really kind of the linchpin discussion, call up hearing. And as, and the developer pulled that from the proposal at the end and was able to move through. Obviously, we had some concerns about parking, traffic, things like that. So the question is, right now, the code's silent on it. And do we want to address that in our code to allow for those with some parameters that address some of the issues like parking, traffic, um, square footage, commercial assignment of space, that type of thing? Or does a council prefer to just say, you know, we don't want to allow these in the future? So essentially the question we're asking right now, if you want to us to pursue it in the code in terms of coming up with some standards, we'll certainly do that, we'll work the planning and then come back to you. But so answering questions with that general yes or no question at this point in time.
Let, let's start with the yes or no question. Who, who would like to pursue allowing amenity club space? Raise your hand.
I, okay, for, I might be slow, but I think I need a better definition of what that is because I feel like that's a really broad, if this feels broad to me, like it's not defined. So we're saying that any hotel, any short-term rent, big short-term rental that has an amenity space, whether people can just sell that amenity space, is that?
Yeah, we're even through, yeah, that's exactly what it is. I mean, can, can, should we allow them to create additional impact to the community without them using the bed space that that was really created for? I personally think that that is not what we need. We don't need that. You don't need people coming to utilize lockers or parking next to the mountain. Why, why, why do we want that? Why do we want the additional impact to the community that we're already having traffic issues to allow somebody to do that? That's, I am, I am a definite prohibit these things.
Eric, I likewise have a very strong no on this. This club membership benefits only the owner, only the developer. I see no benefits whatsoever for the community for some of the items that you mentioned. So I don't even personally, I'll go out on the ice, hopefully it doesn't break under me. But as far as I'm concerned, no to club memberships.
I, Eric, I have a little different point of view. I fully understand what you guys are saying and, and actually agree because my, my view would be, you know, we, we, we keep the door open, however, they have to use, it's not on amenity space. They have to use commercial square footage. They have to use parking, you know, within the code. There, there has to be traffic studies. And I guess where I'm going is, you know, i- it's not an additional impact to the approved um, development. It's just part of the approved development they're going to use in a different way is the door I would, I would consider leaving open. But some very, very strict um, guidelines so that we don't get ourselves in the same place we were, you know, recently.
But Dick, these club memberships, just to kind of argue the other side of it, these club memberships tend to attract really, people are just coming up for the day. And even though you try to say, okay, we're going to assign square footage to commercials so we get paid for it and we treat our density appropriately. I'd, I'd like you to think about, put that aside and just think about it really attracts a day visitor up and out. And I'm not sure how you balance that by, you know, playing with it's commercial square footage or not, or for this or that, so.
Okay, well, I mean, we're, we're allowing it now, you know, for, for owners of timeshare. You know, multiple timeshare projects, not, not, now I'm not singling out any one company, but multiple companies allow their owners to come up for day use. So we're already doing, are we going to ban, are we only banning for fee owner, club ownership? Or are we banning all type use?
I think we should ban all type use. I, I don't think there's any need, if you, I don't think there's any need to have a project where you're not staying, that you should be able to come up and utilize the amenities, impact the community in the way that, that this impacts the community and then just go home. They don't, there's no, there, there is, you know, everybody complains about the traffic problem in town. I think this is a good step to start to, you know, mitigate some of that problem. These are stick, like Gary says, this is day use only. You're not coming up to.
Sorry, I still think this is where the devil's in the details because I, I agree with a certain, like with a certain property that we have in mind where it's, it's like a hotel, like, like the, the property that we discussed, right, with, uh, on Peak Nine. But some of this is a little bit confusing, right? Like Gravity House is a little confusing where you, you can have a gym membership, you can have, um, they have coworking space and there's also a hotel, that sort of thing. It blurs the line. So like, what if somebody came in with a gym where the main point is to have a to see this written out before I am on board with anything because I, it's, it's just not clear how much the hotel plays into the membership. Like, I don't even see, I, I, I don't even see hotel written in here when obviously that's what we're talking about. And so I, that's where I am. I'm, I'm happy to continue the conversation, but I, I don't feel like we're right now.
I agree with uh, Gary on this one. I will, I will look at uh, uh, the, the revisions and the kind of the clarifications that Aaron asked for. I, I don't think, I don't think, like you say, the Gravity House, that gym is, is the same thing as what we're all talking about. But yeah, I'm, I, I lean towards Gary and Eric on this.
Kelly?
Yeah, me too. Um, I don't feel like I, I agree with what Aaron said. I think there are just still some things I'm not clear on and um, I don't think I know enough about sort of the organization of it, that if there could be any benefits that I'm overlooking. But I'd say in general, I agree with um, Gary and Eric in this, but um, would be happy to just look at whatever language staff develops.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'm you. From what I've seen and what I've read here, I see no benefits to the town at all. So I'm not in favor of it.
And he, yeah, and I, I obviously am not e- either. And you know, Aaron, the other thing with Gravity House, it's not really the, the workout area, it's the lockers. It's people that come up because they, they take a parking space, they have a locker, so that's their, that's their reason these are here. And I don't, you know, putting lockers in a, in a parking structure for day use is one thing, but allowing people to keep their stuff year round, I just don't, you know, I'm not a fan. So Rick? You're me too, hey?
I, I do see where this says larger resort properties. But again, and I'm not, it's just the details.
Go ahead, Rick.
Anything that's been allowed to occur already like Gravity House would be grandfathered in, so we can't go in after the fact. And also with the current timeshares, uh, so I think that's what we, that's the big unknown. I gotta see how we would, how um, how we would draft language that would prohibit that uh, timeshare usage in the future from doing, doing what you're explaining. And I also, so the purpose of, of having the majority of you say that you're not interested in, in allowing club memberships means that we're not going to do any additional studying on this. So there's really no discussion to bring back and analysis because that's the devil in the detail. If you were interested in some limited club memberships, then we have a lot of work to do to decide what those parameters would be, what the guidelines would be. But since there's not interest, then it's, all we're going to do is amend the code to say what's not allowed. Right?
Right.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
All right, any other questions on this, comments? All right, let's move on to uh, an executive session, so.
Eric?
Yeah.
Can I suggest? Could I suggest while we still have a number of participants and we have a little bit of time, maybe we spend uh, 15 minutes or so doing uh, some committee reports and things like that. And then, um, and then we would go breakout, council will break out and go into the exec session.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a couple of town manager updates we could do.
All right, go ahead.
I wanted to give you guys a heads up that uh, so you know, there's a lot of work going on at the county level with different groups out there trying to see how to engage high school, the high school students that are looking for some positive interaction in a safe environment. And so one of the things that they've come up with is a concept called drive up concerts. Where they would only allow uh, 10 vehicles into an area and they may have a, you know, a local high school musician playing like Jacob Brewer, he's one of, there's some local high school kids that want to help organize these things at different locations. So they want to do one this Saturday in Breckenridge at a parking lot. We've suggested, um, they wanted to do Tiger Dredge and we suggested that Ice Rink Lot might be better because it's less use and Tiger Dredge would attract a lot more people around it. They're going to kind of coordinate with the chief and they're taking care of everything, but I said, we're happy to allow the land uh, for you to do it on. Just give you a heads up that that may occur this Saturday. And I think the next Saturday they're going to do a DJ in Silverthorne, Kansas.
Was it Ice Rink or Ice House?
Ice Rink.
Better be Ice Rink.
What did I say?
I thought you said Ice House, I just wanted to clarify.
I meant Ice Rink, if I said Ice. The other thing that I'm going to suggest to, so we, we did a first reading, I believe, the first meeting in March on the first meeting in March on, uh, a code amendment for policy 24R on employee generation. Everybody remember that?
Yeah.
That, that employee mitigation formula and there were certain recommendations made by you on increasing that, you know, the 35%, et cetera. We have kind of held off taking that, uh, to second reading and we keep pushing that out and you guys have made motions to continue and it's, it's currently continued to the second meeting in May. So on May 26th, you would be scheduled to hear that as a second reading. Uh, I asked the housing committee meeting today, housing committee group today that my recommendation is we go ahead and do the second reading on that. I don't see us coming to live meetings anytime in June. And so I think at some point we need to address this, this, uh, this particular ordinance and, uh, you know, we're getting, we're probably getting better community participation in these meetings, actually than we ever did on our live meetings anyway. So, um, I don't think we're trying to sneak anything through on anybody and, so if you're okay with that, I think we go, I want to go ahead and proceed with having the second reading on that particular ordinance at the next meeting.
How's everybody feel about that? Good? Let's get it done. All right, that's everyone.
Everybody got the update on the business grant program, right? So that seemed to work out really well for us and so we'll be finalizing any pending grants, but pretty much closing that whole thing out this week. And as you can imagine, Perk was very excited about the additional $100,000 and, they thought they could put most of that directly to rental assistance. They were going to let me know if they needed to hold, you know, a few thousand of that to the side for covering staff or not. But, yeah. That's all I have.
All right. Um, I have, um, a couple of quick things. We did have a mayor's and managers meeting. Um, the county, um, I don't know, when's the last time we talked? I can't even remember. My days are so blurry right now.
It was last Thursday.
Huh? Did we?
You thought about what, MMC?
Yeah, was that, did we, have we had a meeting since then? No, we haven't, right?
Yeah, we had one last Thursday and that's when they did the presentation on wanting to do the big parade that's going to happen in Breck for the high school.
And more, we have not met as a council since the MMC, right?
No.
So, um, I, I don't know how much you guys recall. I sent a personal note to Joe Nagus about the PPP looking, you know, with all the problems between Treasury and the SBA looking just for flat out forgiveness of the PPP money for any business that borrowed, I don't know, I'd said between 500, $750,000. I then mentioned that to the mayors and managers. They all liked it. We wrote a letter from the mayors of Summit County and the commissioners, send that to Joe Nagus, Cory Gardner and, uh, and Bennett. Um, and then I mentioned it at our, we had a cast mayor's call on Friday and, uh, cast liked the idea also. So cast just, um, drafted a letter that Dean Brokey, the president of cast will sign and will send out to the appropriate federal agencies also. Joe Nagus liked it because it gives him something from the smaller towns to sort of show the pain everybody's suffering and maybe that gets worked into, you know, will, will that happen? Probably not, but it might be enough of a, of a tool that he can use to drive something more into the CARES 2.0 Act. The banks like it. I talked to Nick Brinkman at First Bank. He thought it was great because they're worried about, you know, anybody that got below that $750,000 level is probably a pretty small business, even though that's, that seems like a lot of money. It's a small business that can't hire a retainer of lawyers and accountants to, uh, help them battle through the legalese that's going to come out of both Treasury and the SBA for this. So anyway, that's, that's sort of, uh, something that I've been working on on the side. I had a great, uh, great cast meeting with a bunch of mayors. It was very, very cool that, you know, here, um, Dave Chapin from Vale about his COVID experience. Jim Schmidt from, uh, Crested Buttes lost four friends because of COVID. So really, really a great meeting with everybody just sort of watching through some stuff. So, I am also changing my daily videos to Monday, Wednesday, Friday now. Just so I have sort of more to talk about. I felt like I was starting to repeat myself over and over, so.
Hey, Eric, um, one, uh, I love the videos. I love the videos, but two, what, what's your, what's your, your read on how the other communities, I know Crested Butte got ravaged by this thing and, and I don't think, I don't think they're going to recover nearly as quickly. And I think they're, they took a bigger hit than we do from my anecdotal information. What's your read on some of the other ski towns and how they're doing, how they did compared to us?
Uh, all over the place. Like Winter Park has had five cases the entire time.
Wow.
They also don't have a lot going on, you know, with everything being closed down. You know, every community has a little bit different take. Uh, for the most part, everybody has a council that is super supportive. Except for one of the Summit County towns is not super supportive of their mayor and it's been very difficult. But everybody else, you know, J, uh, PT Wood in Salida and, I mean, everybody was like, look, we, we're all on the same page about masks, about social, uh, physical distancing, the whole thing was really great to hear. So, you know, different.
I mean, do you have, do you have a sense why Winter, Winter Park is, didn't get stung as badly? It's because they have less, uh, out of state visitors. So I mean, what?
Probably and this, you know, a lot of, a lot of this stuff circled in the community afterwards. I think when everybody closed, some of these towns just became ghost towns where places like Breck and, and Vale, there's a lot of people that live here year.
Okay, yeah.
I think that, that changes the dynamic.
Right.
I think that we acted as fast as anybody else. And that's why I think as a community, we did really well. We did well enough that, you know, and I mentioned this to the mayors, I think we did well enough that there are people that question if this thing is really true or not, because there's no real on the ground, hey, my buddy died. You talked to Jim in Crested Butte?
Yeah.
Oh, he doesn't wear a mask and he freaks out because not only did he lose a couple of older friends, Jim's in his seventies. He lost a couple of older friends. They lost a guy that owns a pizza place in town that's 50 years old. And it's a big sting in the community. You know, Stamen Vale, they lost a couple of people that were long time. There's a, there's an entertainer there and and is a, uh, has a restaurant and knew him very well. So, you know, they become very militant in how they are treating this thing. It's more difficult when, you know, we've had 186 cases, but I don't, you know, I know, I've heard anecdotally about a couple of people. I haven't lost any friends, so it, it makes the discussion a little different. And I, I think a lot of it is because how fast you as a council reacted to this thing. You know, and when we ask restaurants early on to voluntarily close, I think those things made huge differences in where we landed on this thing. So.
Good.
Yeah. So it was a really cool discussion with everybody. I, I really, I enjoy the mayors in, that are in the ski towns. Andy Beerman from Park City, Utah, he's having huge problems with the mask thing there. You know, they're a very red, red area. So he's having some real issues, uh, unlike a lot of the ski towns in Colorado. So Jeffrey, do you have any updates from anything you've been doing?
No.
All right, Dick? Gary?
Yeah, just a little clip on BCA. We had a board meeting last week. And, uh, again, within BCA today, we have the old BCA legacy organization. We have Breck Music. Uh, needless to say, they're both moving down a parallel path, doing budgets, uh, demonstrating significant revenue losses. Doing the same things that the town has done in terms of, you know, hiring freezes, merit increase freezes. Breck Music is actually going from three full-time employees to, to one and a half as of June 1st. Breck Music, their budgets, they're looking at significant decrease in donor contributions. Breck, uh, BCA is, is doing scenarios that look at anything from the existing 10% revenue diminishment that the town has asked them to factor in up to 20%. The town needed to come back and ask for, uh, additional diminishment of revenues. And really what that does to everything. Uh, both organizations are continuing to do some things along the digital and the virtual lines. And, uh, you, obviously, uh, BCA is, obviously has canceled WAVE, has canceled virtually all the other events through the balance of the year. They're hoping that maybe late summer, early fall, if, um, in terms of the town reopening, if there's a need to do some animation and activation like the Trail Mix Series and some other smaller things like that, that can be brought together quickly, uh, that they're in a position to do that. Uh, Breck Music obviously has canceled their festival, which is their orchestral, has canceled all the Breck music event, excuse me, Breck present series through the third quarter. They're hoping by the end of the year, perhaps they might be able to do some Breck presents in December. Again, all depending upon, you know, where we are with this pandemic and how things are opening and what kind of groups can, can start to congregate, so on and so forth. But the, the bottom line is obviously they're all in the trenches, looking at their revenues, tightening their expenses. But what both organizations are doing, notwithstanding all of this, is trying at the end of the day to create a recovery fund. So that each organization has some dollars, uh, that are available in working with the, uh, you know, the county recovery effort as well as the Breckenridge Recovery Committee. When things need to start getting tuned on again, uh, that there is money in their programs in order to be able to assist and, and help along those lines. Matt Newfeld, um, is a member of both the county recovery group as well as the Breckenridge Recovery Committee. And I think that's a good thing because it directly places the arts, uh, in line with politicians, uh, as well as business people. And so together as things begin to ramp up, whenever that might be, they should be able to provide assistance and, uh, in doing what's necessary part of reopening the, uh, reopening the economy. So Dick, I would suggest that perhaps, and I know Matt Newfeld listens in on these things, Matt and, and Lucy ought to, ought to basically start engaging one with the other sooner rather than later in just talking about some things. Um, your thoughts, your idea, as well as, like I say, Matt is, is sitting right along with all the other decision makers now in the community with respect to reopening the town. So, the arts should not find themselves, uh, amiss or lost in the conversations. Uh, the last thing I'll mention is that BCA was able to obtain a $195,000 PPE loan. So that helped cover employees for a couple of months. And I guess the last thing I would mention is that, uh, BCA management, Tamara, as well as Matt Newfeld, have asked that the finance committee, which generally meets at best quarterly and generally only around the time of year when the audits are coming in, in the year-end statements, is asked that we meet on a monthly basis because, uh, so that there is direct directors involvement along with management as we go month by month. And I think it's something that's comforting, comforting to management, also comforting to, uh, those of us that are on the finance committee as board members that we're all chatting with one another. We're not letting a lot of time in between, uh, decision making. So.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, Kelly, anything?
Uh, the only thing, so, um, I'm representative for the BTO these days and I just wanted to echo what Jeffrey said, which is we are so, so lucky to have them as partners in this. You know, just to weather the storm, but also they're involved in reopening and getting the information the community into retail groups and events, obviously. And I just, in the first meeting with them, it became so obvious that they're so used to thinking outside the box that this isn't even like a new situation. So I really, um, am so glad that we have, we can work alongside them.
Thanks, Kelly. Aaron?
Uh, no meeting for both Saks since last meeting.
Okay, Dennis?
Uh, the BHA meets tomorrow at noon, so I'll have an update next meeting.
Thanks. Uh, Dick?
Yeah, one thing I forgot, Eric, and while we're patting the BTO on the back, one more item. You know, the high school seniors parade that we talked about a while ago is going to happen. It's, uh, Thursday, the 21st at around three o'clock here on Main Street Breck. Could be really fun. The BTA has kind of been pulled in last, last minute and is taking an awesome can-do attitude and is gonna assist and, and work with, um, you know, the, the PD and the sheriff's office and, and the school in terms of executing this. So, uh, again, really lots of appreciation to all parties with this. But especially the BTO kind of got pulled in here at the last minute, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think that'll be a really fun event, kind of unique.
All right.
Uh, Eric, you were going to see if two council members wanted to be part of, uh, of the congressman Nagus's.
Yeah, so, I've been Nagus, um, I've been on phone conferences with him either Saturdays or Sundays every week, since this whole thing started. They want to reach out to council people, so, um, they're looking for two council people. Since I get to do it all the time, they're looking for other voices to listen in. Joe wants to sort of explain where they're going with the CARES 2.0 Act. And, uh, you know, the beauty is there's a good chance that we can get enough money from CARES 2.0 if it passes. If, um, to backfill all that money we gave out as, as rent relief grants for this year. And that would be awesome. Plus a little more and then some in 2021. So, um, who's interested in, uh, jumping on this?
How do you do it? Is it a cell phone or is it?
It's just a webinar or phone call, either one.
And when, when are the, when are the meetings?
It's at noon, it's at noon on Tuesday, the 19th, the week from today.
It's just one time. It's just one listening. Um, you know, he's, he did, he's really great to talk with, great questions.
It's usually people in his district. So you're going to have some of the other resort communities and mountain communities, Boulder. Fort Collins is in his district, so you have some bigger urban areas, but there, I, my guess is you'll have, there'll be 50 people on that call.
Oh yeah, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be within wifi at that time.
I hope you're not violating the 10-mile rule, Jeffrey.
No, I'm not, I'm not. I just.
I'd be very interested, Eric, is unless you think, uh, too much restaurant representation, but I'd be very interested.
Uh, that's great. Anybody else?
I'm interested, but I have a conflict.
Okay.
So if, if it's just Dick, I'll, I'll probably do it with Dick.
Okay, great.
We'll send it, we'll send you the stuff, Dick. All right, so, uh, I think we need to go into exec session for the people or the, uh, participants who are listening in on this meeting. You're welcome to just continue to stay, uh, logged in to this Zoom site. You can, you know, leave, you can leave your computer for a period of time if you want to. The council will reconvene and come back into this site at, by 7:00 PM for the start of the regular meeting. But now they're going to make a motion to go into an exec session and then once they make that motion, uh, they will leave this meeting and go into a, uh, private meeting for the purposes of the executive session. So.
Kelly?
I move that the town council go into executive session pursuant to paragraph 4A of section 246402 CRS relating to the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, sale of any real, personal or other property interest. Paragraph 4B of section 246402 CRS relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Paragraph 4E of section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. And paragraph 4F of section 246402 CRS relating to personal matters.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. A motion has been made for the town council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph 4A of section 246402 CRS relating to the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real, personal or other property interest. Paragraph 4B of section 246402 CRS relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Paragraph 4E of section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and paragraph 4F of section 246402CRS relating to personnel matters. Objects to be discussed in the executive session include, one, an open space parcel the Town Council may have an interest in purchasing, two, a confidential, excuse me, Roll call, please.
Mr. Gallagher?
discussion of a personnel matter the Town Manager wants to advise the Town Council
Here.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
of, and three, confidential discussion of the terms and conditions of possible early
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
retirement proposal for certain Town employees.
Ms. Gielo?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Here. Conference with the Town Attorney concerns the announced subjects of the executive session, Minutes for April 28th and May 5th. but may also include other matters that are protected by the attorney-client privilege Anybody have any corrections, deletion, additions? that exists between the Town and the Town Attorney. No, approval of the agenda, Rick? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton?
Minutes stand up presented, I'm sorry, both minutes stand up presented. Approval of the agenda?
I just want to add a update on the early retirement plan option to the council under Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Owens? new business other.
Yes.
Very good.
Ms. Gielo?
Yes.
Okay, we moved to citizens' comments.
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
We do have a Q and A tab at the bottom here.
Yes.
Did you see that we're still live?
If anybody does have a communication for us, please click that, and we will read it Yes, yes, we're supposed to be live right now.
Okay, got it.
Mayor Mamula.
into the record.
All right, so I need all of you to leave the meeting, and then you go in, log into
If you have something else that you want to send more privately, you can send it to
the go-to meeting that you received for the exec session.
mayor@townofbreckenridge.com, and one of us will answer that. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
We will go to the Breck Tourism Office update first, and then if you do have something
Yes.
Thank you.
you want to comment on, please write it in, and we can get back to it. So Lucy, why don't you take us to the BTO update?
Great, thanks, Eric. In case you haven't had a chance to look at the DMX report that just came out, it's as of April 30. Right now, we're looking at 50% down from the summer. Summer is defined as May through October, so that includes May being zero. Our bookings are coming in for late July, August, and September actually look pretty promising, all things considered. October, it's still a little early for that. Most of the June drop is gonna be groups that dropped, and a lot of those have been rebooked into September. We lost a few, but certainly not everything. One thing I would call out, I asked Bill to look at the Summit County DMX report, which we don't always look at, but we are now, and Breckenridge is currently 75% of the summer bookings, and that compares to 57%, like where we would normally be. So we're sort of leading the charge in Summit, charge, relative term, in terms of recovery for this summer. Everything's relative. We did get final winter numbers, and that's November through April. We ended up at 45% occupancy for the winter, that's worth versus 57% last year. March ran at 35%, and of course, April was zero, so that's what that difference was. So, all things considered, at least, I'm optimistic about late summer and fall, and I really believe Breckenridge is gonna do as well as anybody coming back in terms of lodging. Events, you guys are pretty caught up on everything we're doing with events from the earlier conversations. I would just add that we are talking about Oktoberfest. Munich canceled their Oktoberfest, in case you didn't know that, that's 6 million people that go through there. I've asked Casey to plan ours as if it were a break-even. At break-even, we're still down 200,000 because we make about 200,000 in that sense. So no matter what, we'll have that hole. One of the things we're looking at, to your comments earlier, Kelly, about some of the recycling and diversion, because of the New World Order, if we do go forward with Oktoberfest, we're gonna make it a cans-only event so that we can have all that recycling. Pollenr doesn't like that, but if it's that or nothing, you know, they will work with us on that. So we're using the crisis, if you will, to, you know, we have shift change for some other things we want to accomplish. We'll decide by early June whether that event is gonna be a go or no-go, and I think we will come back to council before we make a decision. We want your support either way. But it would be a very different-looking event. Quickly, for the, at the state level, the Joint Budget Committee for Colorado is in hearings all week, and they will vote this week on their final budget recommendations. They're required by law to pass a balanced budget, and they have to have that done by June, so they'll vote this week. What that means for Colorado Tourism Office, it's looking like they could lose up to 37% of their budget. If that happens, that will have some pretty significant impacts on the BTO's recovery plan for the balance of 2020, as well as our strategy and plans going into '21. So once we see what happens there, because we rely on a lot of their work, and we don't duplicate that work. So once we see what happens with their budget and how Kathy has to shift their strategies, we may have some pretty significant shifts in ours, and that's before, you know, whatever other budget changes are coming our way as well. But that's pretty major. Just to follow up on a couple, you were interested in some of the other destinations. We did a CADMO update, so all the Colorado DMOS, I'll just pull out a couple of them. Aspen just got a $500,000 loan from their town that's being matched with 500,000 of their own reserves, that's their chamber, and they're planning on starting their marketing in mid-June. Carbondale has got retail and restaurants in their main street, and we're looking at that as a model. Crest Debut currently has a 25% occupancy limit on lodging. They'll get a 50% in mid-June, and they're planning on 100% by July, so I hope their county's looking at that. Some of the communities, like Fort Collins is having some issues, they're getting a lot of people showing up from Wyoming, who, like the people Gary used on Subway, they're just kind of doing their own thing. Wyoming had no restrictions, so they're bringing that with them when they come into Colorado, as are the Texans who are coming to Pagosa in droves, camping illegally and the rest of it. Hanging Lakes is gonna open with restrictions outside of Glenwood, and of all of them, the best thing I heard, the moniker, and we may steal it, is "business as unusual." So that may be our new line moving forward. To bring it to Breckenridge, back to Breck, our marketing, for the marketing department, our website visits are increasing, which is good. That means intent to travel, people are getting, it's getting a little more real now, they're looking to see where they might go later in the summer. We are planning on, you know, we have been working on this responsible tourism messaging before, the Care for Colorado, and are you Brecken-ready, and, you know, how we want people to behave when they're, you know, out in the land, on the land around Breckenridge. That responsible tourism strategy across Colorado, certainly everywhere else, is gonna move from responsibility for the place to responsibility for the place plus the people. So that is how we're gonna weave in the expect, we expect you to wear a mask, we expect you to maintain safety. It's all gonna be wrapped into that responsible tourism messaging. So we're working on that now and branding that strategy, and Brett and I will be reviewing all the creative that we were planning on putting in market and making sure it's the right tone, given this new responsible tourism definition. Visitors Guide, we were gonna go to print with that, and given that so many businesses need a break, we're gonna do a digital version and try to refund some of the advertising dollars back to the businesses that advertise, so we're working through that now. We will not have a printed book, and we're not gonna do printed materials in the Welcome Center when we open. Might have some things behind the counter, like the Dining Guide or something, but not brochures out like they used to be. And then I'll just close it with, close on a high note, we just found out that we won a second Webby Award, and this is international recognition, and it's given only to the top 20% of all the submissions, and we won for Best Virtual Design, and we got beat by Apple and ESPN, so.
Whoa.
Yeah. So anyway, that's our report. Happy to answer questions if you have any.
Congrats.
That's awesome.
That's great, Lucy. Any questions for Lucy?
Yeah, Lucy, I would love to have the BTO kind of being involved in the messaging. I mean, I'm a big proponent of wearing masks, and I think we have to promote that, but I also want to try to make it more of a seduction instead of a edict. And so I don't, I just hope that you guys can work with us to try to craft the message to, when folks come, how to get them to wear the mask without alienating them, that they'll never be back.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna echo that, and I think that our business community would be helped. I know lodging who want to do the right thing and have their guests wear masks in public places or large areas. I'm afraid of all the conflict that's going to be created, and anything that the BTO can ease that with messaging before people come so that it's an expectation and hopefully ease some of that conflict. I, thank you.
We'll have a landing page, so once we start doing paid marketing again, that will be driven to a landing page on our site that will be the Responsible Tourism page, and that's where that will be. The mask messaging we're leaning to now, TESS has pulled, the state's using it, and the county has it, and it's a really nice graphic, and it says, "Your mask protects me, my mask protects you." So it's a nicer way to say it versus, you know, no mask, no entry, or something like that. So we might start with that, see how it works, and hopefully won't have to go to something stronger, but, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, hey, Lucy, the Colorado tourism spending is, are they settling in pretty hard on a 37% decrease? Because I saw a few days ago where it was 80 and 90, it was frightening.
Well, it could be that much. What's happening is that they have been funded primarily with gaming funds, so 15 million of their $19 million budget came from the casinos. That money is now all getting thrown into the general fund, and where you were hearing the 80, 90%, that meant like they had to be in there with everybody else, and it could have been that much of a cut. The Governor's Office has come back with, they call them comebacks, and is recommending that they guarantee the CTO at least 10 million out of the general fund, plus another two and a half from another, so at least 12 and a half million is the Governor's recommendation. But the JBC votes later this week.
Good, okay. Well, thanks for that update.
Anything else? All right. Lucy, thanks very much. Thanks for everything you do. All right, last call for citizen comments, non-agenda items.
Let's see.
Moving to continued business, if you have a public comment about any of this, please use the question and answer button at the bottom, and if there is none, we will roll right through, and we begin second reading of Council Bill Number 14, Series 2020. This is nordisprising, the sale of town-owned real property, smuggler, silent friend, iron and crown point loaves.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance, if adopted, would authorize the town to sell a 50% interest in those four mining claims to Summit County Government for $245,000. It's part of owing joint ownership of open space properties that the town and the county have been involved in for a number of years. There are no proposed changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public? I see nothing in the question and answers, so public comment is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
Second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 14, Series 2020, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Gielo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, motion passes. We have several first readings this evening. The first is first reading of Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020. This is an ordinance amending section 12-14-23, the Breckenridge Town Code concerning the water system maintenance fee. James?
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, good evening. Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020, will amend section 12-4-23 of the Breckenridge Town Code. As presented at the work session, the ordinance amendment will increase the 2019 water service maintenance fee from the current fee of $8 a billing cycle to $12 a billing cycle. Additionally, as disclosed at the work session, the town did charge $12 for the first billing cycle of 2020 without ordinance authority. The town plans to credit back the $4 overage to the water customers as part of the second water billing cycle. The amended 2020 water service maintenance fee of $12 will take effect for July 1st, 2020 billing cycle, and will remain in effect until changed by further ordinance. Happy to have you.
Thanks, James. Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Council, on first reading, Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Mamula?
Yes. All right, motion passes. We move to the second reading of Council Bill Number 15, Series 2020. This is an ordinance approving a lease with Zweiglaw, PC, Unit 200, Breckenridge Professional Building, 130 Ski Hole Road.
Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance that if approved would permit a five-year new lease with Zweiglaw in the Breck Professional Building. They're already a tenant in there, and they wish to renew. It also has an option for a five-year renewal after the initial five years. There are no changes from first reading.
All right, any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 15, Series 2020, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, Helen.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Gielo?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, motion passes. We have several first readings this evening. The first is first reading of Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020. This is an ordinance amending section 12-14-23, the Breckenridge Town Code concerning the water system maintenance fee. James?
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, good evening. Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020, will amend section 12-4-23 of the Breckenridge Town Code. As presented at the work session, the ordinance amendment will increase the 2019 water service maintenance fee from the current fee of $8 a billing cycle to $12 a billing cycle. Additionally, as disclosed at the work session, the town did charge $12 for the first billing cycle of 2020 without ordinance authority. The town plans to credit back the $4 overage to the water customers as part of the second water billing cycle. The amended 2020 water service maintenance fee of $12 will take effect for July 1st, 2020 billing cycle, and will remain in effect until changed by further ordinance. Happy to have you.
Thanks, James. Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Council, on first reading, Council Bill Number 17, Series 2020, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Gielo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We have a first reading of Council Bill Number 18, Series 2020. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Title IX of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning overhead walkway lighting. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If approved, this ordinance will create a new category of overhead walkway lighting into Chapter 12. into chapter 12 exterior lighting of the town code. This would allow for year-round downcast overhead walkway lighting within lighting zones one and two, and includes lumen restrictions and Kelvin limitations. For second reading, if approved this tonight, we will amend according to the work session earlier today to include LEDs as required for the walk, overhead walkway lighting, and we will remove the publicly-owned piece of the definition to allow for all public and private property to have the year-round overhead walkway lighting.
Very good, thank you, Julia. Any questions for staff?
If someone were to make this motion, would they have to refer to what the staff is going to do, or just a motion in place? Okay.
No.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? There's no one in the Q and A, so the public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 18, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion from council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Giello?
Yeah.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yeah. All right. Move on to Council Bill number 19, series 2020. This is an ordinance concerning the penalty for violating chapter eight of Title V of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning noise. Tim?
And the town's municipal judge was last in front of the council. He suggested that the town council consider changing the nature of a violation of the noise ordinance from a criminal violation to a civil infraction. This ordinance is drafted to do exactly what the judge suggested. If adopted, it will make a violation of the noise ordinance a civil infraction punishable only by a fine of up to $500. There's no possibility of fail time. And it also, because it's civil, there will be no entitlement to a jury trial.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? Hello, Chief, welcome back. All right, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No, is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 19, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Giello?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Motion carries. We have a final first reading of Council Bill number 20, series 2020, an ordinance amending chapter 14, Title IX of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning public town projects. Tim?
Several years ago, the town council adopted the town, what is called the Town Projects Ordinance, that describes how the town's public projects, primarily construction projects, will be viewed and handled. This ordinance is the result of council direction that was given, I believe, at the last meeting. Right now, the Town Projects Ordinance does not require any special public notice, either when a proposed public project is considered by the Planning Commission, or when the matter is actually decided by the council. The goal and primary purpose of this ordinance is to require that the public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, as well as the town council's hearing to determine whether a public project will be approved or not, will each have a mailed public notice component, just as is required for the final hearing on a Class A development permit application before the Planning Commission. Basically mailed notice to a joint, joining property owners three, within 300 feet of the proposed project. I think the thought is that this will make the town project process much more transparent and lead, hopefully, to a better and more informed decision by the council when a town project is being considered. At staff level, as we started working through the ordinance amendment concerning notice, we found a couple of other relatively minor issues that we would like to propose also be amended in the Town Project Ordinance. Section one of the ordinance makes it clear that the town's off-street parking regulations and exterior lighting regulations do not apply to town projects. Section two and three of the ordinance are the public notice provisions that I've already mentioned. And I want to point out also that not every town project is required to go in front of the Planning Commission, the more, or the less significant ones are, are not. And so the ordinance in section four amends, make it clear that we do not, at staff level, have to get town approval to issue a grading and utility permit associated with the town project, and also any project that is classified as a class, that if it were filed under the Development Code as a Class C, D major, or D minor, the decisions on those projects can be made by the Community Development Director. That's where we are. We think that these amendments will make the town ordinance, the town project ordinance better and more workable.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions? Of, Tim? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? There's nothing in the Q and A, so public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 20, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record, aptly by Tim.
There is a motion, is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? I'm glad we're doing this. Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Giello?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Are there any call-ups for the Planning Commission decisions of the 5th of May 2020?
So, Mayor?
Yeah, Rick?
Planning matters, I had a new item under other.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did. Yeah, totally.
So Mayor and Council, I just want to make you aware that I'll be developing the, finalizing the plans for an early retirement option that we will present to a select number of employees that would be eligible for the employee medical health plan that we currently have, and I would expect that that would go out to those individuals probably in the next week, ten days, so.
Rick, do you need anything from us?
I don't think it takes any official action, there is no amendment to the budgets that is needed or anything, I just wanted to create an awareness of it.
Very good. Anybody have any questions or comments for Rick? No? Okay, thank you, Rick. Back to Planning Commission decisions, anybody have a call-up? Planning Commission's stand as presented. We already did the report of the town manager and staff, Rick, do you have anything to add?
No. Oh, I just, what do you want to do about next week? We have a, we've been having a meeting almost every week, but honestly, right now, I don't have any timely agenda items that I could think that we would want to do, but it's up to you if you want to ask for another special meeting next week or not.
Anybody? I think let's, let's leave it till the 26th for now, and, you know, everybody's available by Zoom, so if something comes up, we can jump on it if we need to, I think. Does that sound good?
Yeah. As Pro Tem, I endorse that.
Thank you, Pro Tem.
Thanks.
Need to get you busy.
Nice job, number two.
Anybody have any other matters this evening?
Nope.
Anyone?
No.
All right, I like that. That's it then, thank you, everyone. As usual, great job, and, and touch wherever you are.
See ya.
Thank you.
Thank you.